Rick Whitmore, North Road. I'm here tonight because I got a few things. Really, I'm sitting here looking back to the last couple of years. And I'm thinking about the endless conversations, discussions, arguments that this town has been having. And really, it's just an extension of the same discussion that's been going on for the last 20-plus years. I mean, six months ago, you were given a clear mandate from the town, a clear directive on giving us some school options. And we're still not there. It's still a big mystery. We saw a presentation and I saw a glimmer of what we were looking for, what we voted for. But now we've pulled back. I mean, there was an update tonight saying it's being held up because of some interesting emails. I mean, I don't know what those emails say, but I do know that 60% of the town told you what they wanted. So please, just get it done. Put aside any personal preferences and ideologies. Just please give us what we voted for. I want you to be the board that gets it right. 20 years from now, I don't want to look back and all of you were saying, hey, remember back then? We crushed that school choice. No, let's get it right. So 20 years from now, when we have the kids, you know, that are in school now, the parents, their kids have the same option and they would have had that option for multiple generations. Let's just get it done, get it right, please. Changing gears, I got a quick security thing. I had no idea that the trailers didn't have bathrooms. And it's kind of shocking to me that the front door of the school has a security door that you have to be buzzed in and out of, but we'll give an eight-year-old a key to the school and send them out to go to the bathroom. It's kind of crazy. And from what I've heard, it's been in place for quite a while and nothing has happened yet. I don't like it. I don't like it at all. So I hope that's something that comes up for a serious discussion to see if there's some way we can get around. Right? And the last quick thing I have, how about we let the kids dress up in their costumes for Halloween? I know it hasn't been done, I don't know if it was ever done. Halloween's on a Tuesday. I remember as a kid, I loved it. I'm sure they would love it. I think it would be a great one. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carol Rhodes, Church Street. I'll speak up because the air conditioning is muffling all of us. And it's hard to hear even with a front row seat. But a quick request, and I mentioned this last time I came to the meeting that wasn't for the public. Can you please post your notices on the town site where you have a page and ensure that the people who subscribe to that email service can receive notice of your events? It's pretty straightforward. Every commission in town does it. Not every commission. 99% of the commissions do it. It's very effective. It gets to people. People know what's going on. That would be helpful to keep the 70% of the population that doesn't have a dog in this hunt prone to what's going on. And also the 80% of the people, excuse me, 100% of the people that pay 80%. You use 80% of all the tax money. There you go. So it'd be nice to keep them all informed too, if that's their choice of channel. If you do that, that would be terrific. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Onto a gender review. Does anyone have anything else to add to the agenda?
Under G, I'd like to add an FY24 update. That's this year. And then I have two additional informational items for the end.
I also have two.
Wow.
But maybe.
A lot of information.
Yeah, but a lot of information.
I have two informational and Kendra has two.
Two informational.
Yeah, so there'll be five total.
Unless they're, unless we're at the same.
Um, okay. Anyone else want to add anything to the agenda?
Okay. Do we need to add the non-public letters now or do we just do that when we make a motion?
If you know what they are.
Do we not?
You can take the motion.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so we have no items we can touch agenda?
I don't think anything came into this, with Brian, no consent came in, right? If I didn't have no maternity leave or any of that stuff.
Okay.
Um, review of correspondence. He received roughly 30 emails, I think, related to the high school, which I will request be attached to our minutes for this meeting. There was no other, there was one other email that I want to sort of quickly touch on. Someone sent an email about whether we are going to be coding off the road after drop-off. So there was a concern that people would be driving between the modules and the school. I didn't know the answer, so I didn't know if there was a plan.
Yes. The road is blocked by past Blue Shen, kind of where the dirt hill goes up that hill.
That hill.
And it's blocked at 755 and it's not undone. We removed those cones at 220.
You do have deliveries, because I remember we used to have deliveries, they moved the cones. Everybody moved kids out of recess.
Yes, yes.
Do you still do that?
Uh, yes, we haven't been about that. Most of our deliveries now are in the morning.
Okay.
First thing in the morning.
And you make sure if you did have delivery, they turn around and go help you instead of going to.
Yes.
And we haven't seen any cars going like this way.
I've been wondering about if you needed a sign, so do not enter.
No, we don't have anybody coming that way recently.
Okay. Well, if it comes an issue or people didn't know where to go, we can certainly talk about putting up a one-way sign or painting of an arrow or something. So that is the only correspondence that I sort of specifically want to call up. But was there any other correspondence that you wanted to discuss?
Just when I was reading the correspondence, I just kind of went through it. I was checking off like, against, was against choice, wanted option A, wanted option B, against private schools, both okay if you keep the money down, against top-offs, must keep Concord High, for top-offs, against top-offs, no lottery. So I just felt that the letters, like I kept track of them, there wasn't any. I think the one that was probably the highest was option B. Option B had nine letters since it was approved. But everything else was all over the place. So I just wanted to tell them that there was no definite direction of it then. Obviously, the option B.
Yeah. And well, as soon as we get the minutes, we'll attach all of those so people can see it. I did, I was very pleased that we got.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, I would always love more correspondence, but I think 30 emails in response to our presentation was helpful. There were a lot of ideas and suggestions and I thought it was, I thought it was very useful. So I'm glad that we did that. Yes, they will be available for everyone to review. Anything else under review of correspondence? Okay. Facility updates.
Do we have any?
Do you have anything for Chris?
The parking lot is done.
Parking lot is done. Fire alarm is at least done testing. And there's still been some.
Roof is about 95% done. They sort of do all the flashing in certain parts of it. It's still, it's still like to be completely dead. While we get some special orders from that for certain parts of it. What Chris told us.
So the fire panel is, was inspected. There was a plan to open school, but there are still some outstanding items that they want us to look at to consider. Is that my understanding? Okay. Do we need to come up with a plan for that or they're still in the works and we'll talk about it when we have a better idea?
I, Zach's not here. I forgot, he wasn't coming. So I asked him to look at the list because he's the most knowledgeable about. When I, when I saw the list, it was, could have been written in a outline, but I didn't know it. So I wanted him to look at it and decide, do we need to approve? Is this going to cost more money? Can this be incorporated? I don't have those answers, so we can just wait.
Yeah.
Until he's here. I asked about the stairwells. So when they put, inside of the stairwells do all the stairs. And I know there's still some things in the stairwells, but I've been told that some stairwells are different.
One that's outside the nurse's office is not. There's some floors to contain it, so he's comfortable with what we have up in that stairwell and all the tools are pretty much cleared out there.
Yeah, there isn't much, it's just a little bit here and there.
Yeah, yeah.
He went through and I thought it was something I didn't know until we went to the walkthrough with him then. There are different types of stairwells. And I just thought storage under a stairwell is storage under a stairwell. And apparently that's not the case. So there were some nooks that we were allowed to keep certain things. But I think it was, was it if the fire doors were gonna, if the doors were gonna shut, that it had to be more open, I think, than if not. So everything is, is to the standard that they set for us. Yes. Yep. Cool. Yep. Any other facility updates? Cool. Updated bus rooms. So I think last, last time you could give the permission to just move ahead and Kelly did some updates. So I thought you might would just be approved the most updated version so we can put a board approval CFP on them.
I didn't see the third one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we're on a version three. But that always happens the first couple of weeks of school. And so far, so good?
So far, so good.
Excellent.
Well, we're moving forward and maybe this week this week we can prepare. And I'll be sure to update on that.
I know, I saw, and she said, I'm not doing it anymore. I'm like, yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Things may change a little bit when the bridges reopen.
I was gonna say.
Right?
As soon as we said the updated schedule, they're gonna reopen them. The way is that? Supposed to be in the next two or three weeks, isn't it?
Oh, before the fair.
Before the fair.
Smart.
Yes. Um.
Sad enough.
So do you need a motion?
Yes, okay.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. This year 23 retainedage, or do you want to do the 24 update first?
Yes. So I just wanted to make you aware before we vote on the amount of retainage that I already froze the budget for DCS. And we are keeping an incredibly close look on it because we had some, some changes since the budget was developed and approved and primarily in the special education lines. The difficulty at this time of year is knowing where, you know, the students in Concord just barely settled in and there's a period of ad drop, the first couple of weeks of school. So our estimates aren't even due yet for the students in receiving special ed services. So we have, still have an estimate that's a year old in there right now. But I know for sure our placement, our placement line right now is over $400,000 in deficit. Our contracted services line though, right now, is now $100,000 to deposit. So that's better than it was. But it's, I'm just being really careful because we don't know where everything's gonna shake out. And knowing that we are, we have some lines already overdrawn, I really want to make sure that we have enough other lines that, between special ed trust if we needed it. And that's why I want to advise you to vote to retain as much as you can so that if we have any other issues, we may desperately need that to balance our budget at the end. I won't, I won't unfortunately know more for probably a month because we just started the school year.
Right.
You know, we're, we don't know what's coming in. We don't know what changes might be made. We're not, you know, we, we start looking at this usually in December because we have a few months to base the rest of the year on to estimate with. So we're keeping a really close look on it. I, today I felt a little bit better seeing what I saw. So as long as you're okay with the, the able list. You know, we've been, Trish and I have been emailing, Kristen and I have been emailing and we really held on to some things. But I feel today that, you know, we have advisory books for middle school we needed. We have the art journals that they used to run their program. Couple of field trips were already planned, so I'm gonna move ahead with those things. And then we'll just, you know, like we said, we're conserving. We're not gonna order enough toilet paper to, you know, last for three years. We're gonna just really care for it till we have more information. And that's, that was a, a plan to you, that's how we proceed.
How do you make those decisions? I mean, at freezing that early in the year, is such, has a impact on people in the library to individual teachers too?
Yeah.
What are we planning on doing to decide who gets to do this?
So, right, we did a lot of ordering, I think Trish over the summer, right? So a lot of teachers had what they had planned to get, so that was already done. So now it's really just the administrative team looking at what's being requested, obviously. And, you know, knowing that the, when Mrs. Smith said the art program depends on, the whole program revolves around these, then okay, then they need them, you know? Because I'm not gonna withhold something that I feel like is gonna be really impactful to students unless I get to November and say, oh my God, we don't have money, then I'd be happy to request it. So just want you to know that we're, you know, it's a freeze, but it's not a cease spending freeze.
And the board doesn't have to do anything, just have a freeze or?
No, if you feel okay about my plan, if you wanna override me and say, no, don't spend a penny more, you can certainly do that. But I think we have a close enough eye on it right now that over the next month or so, we'll have more information and I'll.
Okay.
Do you want, well, I guess.
So for retainage, that's, that's where you have to take action.
Yes.
So Amber, the DRA actually uses a formula to determine how much you can retain out of your fund balance. It went, it was emptied last year to go towards that million-dollar warrant article. You had some set aside, you had around $200,000, I think, were correctly set aside. So this year you can retain up to 302,016,8520, to be exact. And that's based on your town valuation and another formula times like 2.5%. That's how they calculate that number. So if you are, since we don't know, we haven't closed the books yet. We don't know exactly what your fund balance will be. When Amber closes the books and we know what your fund balance is and we found all the warrant articles, it would make sense tonight to take action to say we will retain up to the full amount available to us.
Do we anticipate that we will have the full amount available?
I think so. I think so. You might be a little bit short, but it's, everything right now is so. It's, you know, September, so it's hard to. Um, but yes.
Before we decide to do this, could we have a little more information just about the layers of funding that we have just for people who are listening?
Yeah.
And especially with the discussion last night with Board of Select. Obviously, we have a different approach to budgeting, probably because we have these surprise changes that can happen sometimes to our special ed line, which can lead to big swings in costs and are required by law and are out of our control effectively. So therefore, we have over budgeted. We've had surplus over the past few years, a number of years. And there's reasons for that. If, if something, if we freeze the budget, we're on a default budget, but we freeze it and we still end up incurring more costly budgeting for, for that.
So if you had hopefully up to the full amount of retainage, that's why I've been looking at the lines that are over and seeing what other sources you have exactly what you're mentioning. We would have the $302,000 set aside. You have $300,000 that you need to fund your warrant articles. So we're hoping for $602,000 at least when the books are closed. If there's only 500, then we will only retain 202 instead of 302. So we don't know yet what that will be. And then one of those warrant articles was to put $100,000 into the special ed trust. So I updated the fund balances for the trust funds and that one is at 222 right now. So if you have 100, that will bring it to 322. So that will be a good offset towards where we know we have a fall right, shortage right now. We have $21,000 in our technology trust fund. We have 828 in our building repair fund that we will soon be taking a couple of the chunk out of. We have paving, which we'll be taking a good chunk out of. We only have $186 in our equipment. And we have $143,000 in our building addition, which we will be able to touch. So which, the which one? The building addition? 143, 414.
So I think part of your question, maybe I didn't understand, but now I'm curious. So let's say, you know, we have all these funds and the retainage and let's say there's another surprise special ed cost that we couldn't have foreseen or anticipated. And then we're like way far out of budget, what, what?
What's the sequence of the, the, the?
Yeah, right. Like what do we do?
There's a sequence of layers of that.
Yes, yes. So anything that you had, the contingency planner would be for anything you had that we could use in the budget and take from a trust fund. So we have things that we plan to use the trust fund for, but we may say, okay, you know, we've spent X amount of dollars in facilities. We weren't gonna replenish, we weren't gonna take that from our trust fund. But this year we don't have any money, so we're going to, you know? If, if, so if you have a building maintenance trust fund and you were using, doing your landscaping to maintain, that would fall by example. But anything that we can take, we technology money. So if we had a line in the budget we bought computers with, we can say, okay, that 20,000, we're taking that from that trust fund, meaning every penny we can get. So those are all the fallbacks that we have. And, you know, I hope it doesn't get to that, but it would sequentially go to the retainage, the trust funds, the budget, pulling things out.
Is the retainage, I think what you're stating is that's a last, last resort? And so maybe use the special ed trust fund before we can access the retainage?
I, the, I'll get a copy of the statute, but the statute did change to give the board more flexibility on when they can use that. It used to be you had to be completely out of every source of funding that you had before you could access that. And that's, that's what, yeah, that loosened up a little bit on the latest. I think it was last year's legislative session that changed. And I'll get you. Do you see the word? So I hope we're not even anywhere near having to do all of that. But we need to be prepared. Right. Looking room. September 6th. So, you know, all the times last year when we said, oh, we'll leave that for May, there probably won't be, you know, a pot of money. And I think we're probably going to want to have public hearings soon once, because Trish already has the stack of the voices that she's put through. So we can put in for those and get our budget reversed for those so that we have a good eye on from the trust funds. So this is just a sort of procedural question, but if we, do we have to have a separate public hearing for each trust fund or can we have one public hearing?
Have one. We have to publish in the paper. So we would list the trust fund approximately, not much we're gonna talk about withdrawing from it. If we list each fund and.
Got it. But we don't have to have like separate meetings?
No, separate, okay.
Yes, I think probably we're going to have to.
On books, you retain the backswing of the votes.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you think there will be monthly updates on this? How often do you get this?
Yes, I will absolutely give you monthly updates. And I might not have a ton more information, but I'm still gonna tell you what I have.
Right.
Yeah. I don't have that tonight because I'm doing it for exec board next week. So I, I haven't touched, Amber's gonna talk to the consultant, so we know exactly where to add. So I'll give that to you. In two weeks.
Next week.
Wow. Yeah, you'll get an exec board. Yeah. Um, okay. So next item is 23, 24 board goals. I know we've had a discussion about this at a prior meeting. And the more that I have been thinking about goals, the more, I don't think I'm prepared to like vote on goals today. I think it would be helpful if we reviewed our old goals, so the old school board goals are in your pocket. And then did a sort of brainstorm and chat about if there are like certain categories of things that people think that we should include in our goals. If that makes sense.
So we had an update, was there extended?
Yeah, sorry Nate, this is sort of, we're really not gonna throw it at you because none of us are here.
No, I think as I recall, we did not make any of that.
What is the, what's the point of the excess option?
Um, there's been, it was a number of years that actually, Steve Barry came and represented Board of Select. This was maybe five years ago, four years ago. And was interested in kind of working on sort of a land swamp, like the land. There's land that the school district owns, there's land that the town owns. All in your view. And I think the question at the time was, they needed places to look at where to establish a proposed fire station, safety complex. And I think they were asking about, and I forget exactly what they proposed. I think, look at the land at the school, since there's a few that are. They were proposing about. Well, yeah, I think they were, I, I, forgive me, I don't remember exactly, but.
It didn't go anywhere.
Yeah, we didn't go anywhere with this.
They changed their mind.
I think the town ended up selling some of that land, auctioning it off. Anyway, there is this big challenge that schools are holding on stage. And, and, and I don't know if that was evolved or not, because it was proposed at the time. But anyway, there has been a discussion about why is the school district sitting on this land? It's not being taxed, it's not, you know, could there be a revenue made from it? Could there be, I think we brainstormed as a school, a board over the year, we brainstormed putting solar panels there, making it a transportation center without, to serve the whole SAU. Selling it to pay rights, putting it into kind of, into conservation and selling the development rights, but observing it or putting a, putting a, putting an easement on it. Those kinds of options. And we have not done anything with it. So this was like, at the time, a year ago, thinking, should start to think about what the town wants to do with this land. With the goal of doing something. I think with that, and based on the comments we've had from the public, and we have had zero comments about this. This seems like it might have dropped off in terms of prior, because in some people's minds, with bicycle conversations, other conversations we're having. It's facilities, like there's all kinds of things we've been going on, so.
I just, I mean, I think about how everybody, I just, we're past, or it might sound like it's gonna be a bold line for some.
There's a lot of people who would rather not, you know, hear the argument that bringing more people in, more houses, that it's just actually going to increase the cost to our school because those people bring kids with them.
And if you put additional school housing, maybe you can business. Something that's not gonna bring more people into your local live, but more business, we all have that. This is the concept, right?
So that, there was nothing proposed to do, other than we should form a committee.
Yeah, and I will say, the energy committee has reached out after the warrant article last year. The town owner, I think it was a petitioned article, that the school board and the select board will work together to think about a solar. I had a very cursory conversation with someone from the energy committee and have not had a further conversation, but I know they were potentially thinking about proposing having a joint school-town solar array there. But I don't, I don't feel like I can make like any sort of progress on that. So I'm not exactly sure what to do about that. Do you think it's worth talking about? I think we should figure out what. You know what, you would probably be way better.
I used to be.
I don't know anything about this. And I, you know, the town did approve the warrant article saying that they wanted us to work with the town. We gave him a huge stack of utility bills. And then he, there was things missing and look, I know that my office has gone back before several times to give him some information, so I know he's been doing something with it. I'm not sure how far he got.
That would be great. I know, I know nothing about that. I also, at the same time, know that we have talked about solar on Maru. So I don't know if that would be, want that to be. I have to ask him. I don't know how to get it. I don't know the best way to find a site. Well, he has used a lot of ins for grants, things like that too, so.
So certainly we could add, if that was a priority of the board, we could add solar as a general topic. You know, separate from the safe road question.
So maybe we can leave that right now, let me talk to him and see what, what he is. Anything that's, he's thinking near future, he has good ideas. Otherwise, maybe something.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like it's a burning thing.
I don't feel like it's a burning need, based on all of the current burning needs, but obviously.
I mean, certainly it's a way to save money.
Yes.
Saves money is a good idea, but yeah. Good idea, but yeah.
Uh, yeah, I wanna make sure we're thoughtful and like fully resourced to make a solar decision before we do. Um, does, we don't have to decide it right now, but does anyone have strong feelings about including state or poverty as a goal for the next year? I'm, I'm happy, by the way, to sort of draft an initial list of goals and then we can review.
He had, he had put Danielle and some names.
Yes.
I have those. I I looked at it, it showed up too.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea to throw it on there and then look at what's on the list and then maybe do it on.
Okay. Yep. Right.
Can we just put it on and maybe next week, think about it, take it on.
All right. Sounds good.
The next one came from um to the, the anti-defeat of the uh, the building proposal uh, bond. And I think the, the reflection at the time of floor last year was that uh, apparently we had no idea what the town was wanting. So we thought we were moving in the right direction, but that was not the direction the town wanted to go. So this was us, a goal of bringing in and hearing from people before we took that step again of proposing something that we, we, in the end, you know. If, if the argument we were making was that people moving to this town, our population's private, there's many more kids in this building, we're already first to conceive, so we need more space. Um, and if that argument is, is still uh, still holds up, then we need to figure out a way to move forward. But at the same time, the town needs a safety complex, the town needs all these things. And how to put it all together, so it's, we need a, you know, tax free package from the beginning.
I'd like to change this goal and make it more like, I would, I would like to, you know, we've talked a lot about what is asked and required, where are we not needing. What are the real issues about? I'd love to focus more on that and then maybe try to come up with some solutions to that instead of a, a building.
So I identified the deficiencies in our current.
Yeah, like, I mean, is it possible to, without spending a lot of money, can we move in our rear countertops? When you move our music rear counters, can we, what are the things that we're really not needing, finding? And then in helping with that. I mean, to me, the first step is to list the things that we really, really have problems and brainstorm solutions together.
So maybe more of a prioritize.
Yeah.
But frankly, the two modular is just, is kind of an obvious, like, I think we can do that, we need more space.
Yes.
But maybe, I don't know if we're saying that maybe we can do things with the space that we have.
Right, or or what's the, or maybe we do it to an addition, but it's a small addition, like what's the, what can we get by?
So.
Um.
Do we put our music in the modulators?
First floor.
Yeah, the classes have to walk outside to the module.
It's a horrible idea.
Feeling.
It's fine, I know.
I know, we used to have.
We brainstormed.
Very fun, that tier used to be an honor back, back in the days, and maybe even move the music room down too. Shut them down, it's probably something we can do here, but it's something I could.
Part of the uh, impiz behind this one was, was not, was I think recognizing the fact that the previous speaker uh, just said that um, there is seventy percent-ish of the community that is paying our taxes and voting, but not seeing the school in its current state. So how, that's where this is coming from. What do, what does the town as a whole, how do we, how do we get the support? When we do have a proposal, how do we get the support of taxpayers whose votes, who need to support this to move forward, but don't see the school and aren't involved in the school? That's where, it is a town decision, so that's, that's the idea behind, I think, part of the idea behind this, this.
I mean, I think it's, um, I think it's an important goal and I, I'm not quite sure how to tackle it.
Yeah.
But I.
I think you have to start getting priorities, start sorting the priorities, sort of things that really need to be fixed.
Yeah, yes, and I know that architects have some sort of.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
They have lots of, and a lot of them are treatable too, I mean, they have teachers with.
Right.
When you're, I think when you develop the goal, though, it's the, it's the endpoint.
Yes.
Right. And then the objectives are probably to determine what the needs and what first warrants are, and then you can sort of, right? If you agree, the overarching goals, to figure out next steps for our building. To pull this more broad, like.
Right, exactly.
Yes, yes, that's, that's a good thing.
To measure. Yeah. I think that makes sense, I think, um, I think one thing as a general statement about goals, I think these are like so very specific to projects.
Yes, I read these, they're so specific, I'm like, how am I supposed to comment on these?
Right. And I just, I wonder if there's opportunity to do things outside of projects.
Yeah, like I wrote down, what about the children?
Right, right.
What about the learning environment, you know?
Mine was student achievement. I mean, that's a perpetual goal of the school board. Um, and I don't quite frankly know how the school board can be most effective in assisting student achievement. Um.
That's also encapsulating a lot of the competition we had over the years, which is what constitutes a school board level goal. At three thousand feet foot level versus what is a school goal across the administration.
Correct. Right. Mm-hmm.
And the goals by the administration, by teachers on an annual basis, all, I think, one of the conferences we had a class a few years ago. Because it can be linked to, and maybe shouldn't derive from the school. To live inside. Is a school goal to raise student achievement scores on the SAT or whatever, you know?
Right, I can't, I, that's too specific, I mean, I think it would have to be.
No, that's.
I know, but.
Yes, exactly, supporting the school community and you've supported student achievement by approving curriculum.
Yeah, right. You know, the staff comes to you and says, we're trying to, the math programs aren't working in those schools, we wanna up our math scores, we want, you know, so your goal was the same, but you are, you're just, your involvement is different.
Yeah. Right.
I think it's like, so you're supporting the curriculum, you're, um, you know, I, I've said for a couple of years, and I, I know things get in the way, but you still need to do another data presentation, like you still need to hear more about marketing the school without kids. So maybe that's it, more of, instead of like the student achievement, it's more of, can we, can we have more meetings with some of the teachers about the curriculum? And this is stuff that they're having.
And I think like any barriers that they're feeling about student achievement, right? Like, yes, the math program that we had wasn't working for the teachers, like things like that, I would love to know more.
Like we approved, we approved the new math program, I would really love to have an update on that in six months, how's it going? Is that helping?
That is why that last bullet pointed in there at the very bottom is there, update something.
Update the education.
But it's not that we, it's, it, the way this language was couched is that the major bullet is that our goal as board is to improve communication with the community.
Right.
To inform the community about the stuff that's happening at the school. And that, and that I think was a way of separating, but also linking, on the schools, the schools are, and on the school boards.
Yeah, I don't know. Yes, because it's not our role to micromanage what happens at the school, right? I think.
But you, you, I mean, yeah, you, you do have a role and you just need to identify what you're, what you want your role to be in that.
Forget about that. Yes.
Supporting the curriculum, learning, buying, and that's um, that's.
Right, structure of assessment.
What if it's a goal of like creating or fine tuning a schedule, um, communication with the different departments like throughout the year? Like to touch base more frequently?
That seems like a big burden on departments.
I don't know that. Yeah, I, I mean, that's not going to support increasing student achievement. It's going to improve the knowledge of, right, and learning in the school. I think you need, you know, you, the board, Nate will remember, used to receive when the state results came out, one of the, you know, within the next meeting or so, there was a presentation about how DCS did compared to the state on state testing. Um, we had done some star testing results at times, the team would, you know, bring that all in and give you a complete picture. Um, you have your student success report from Concord that's on here to figure out the meeting we're making on the top test about that, so. You just need to identify what you're going to do to support that. And part of that may come from Brian and Kristen giving you some input on what they need, that's what are you working on in the school for, for achievement that the board can support you on.
Yeah.
Do you want us to talk about that on Friday at leadership?
Please.
Two weeks, how was the ideas for you?
That would be great.
Great.
How can we support you, student learning?
I put a couple of bullets together.
Yes.
It's on the back of, like, the goal on that was fine. So Danielle and Nate both had some thoughts.
You would feel like to speak to yours?
Sure, yeah, um, so I, I think maybe uh, I'll eliminate the point that it's maybe worth taking a step back and just being a little bit broader. And regarding my first goal there, it says, draw up plans for DCS expansion beyond the March twenty twenty-five mark. Maybe that's too specific and maybe we can take a step back and say, you know, what really, how do we uh, space needs, I guess we could go back a couple of years and reestablish what are our space needs? We've done a lot of work on figuring out what our space needs are, so there's a lot of information out, that can tell you what our space needs are.
Yeah.
But we could go back and relook at that, and then we could take these steps of what.
And prioritize.
Sure, exactly, and so maybe that's too specific and you can go for the change that. And I think, at the same time, looking at, there's gotta be some way to move forward, and so looking at a March twenty five report, I may have seen. We need to move forward with that as we're trying to, we may ask. So to just kind of, you know, you wanna just sort of take as much time as possible. We also have other things that are, that we're working on, so we can't do everything all at once, but, but I think that might be the goal, is to say something should happen next year. Um, and the second one is about, again, continuing that, of communicating with the community. We have been so uh, consumed as a board of last year, we have, um, you asked a couple of years ago, or whatever it was, about I think, I wrote in one of those comments like three years ago, it's like, oh, we should have a, a, a first uh, Concord contract proposal, whatever it was. And then that was like four years ago, totally derailed because COVID happened and because that, so because all that stuff has been consuming us for so long as a board. We're getting further away from that, and uh, it's nice to now start to have the time to think about the kids and the curriculum, and that's why we're all in this board, I think. And so, um, how do we, how do we establish goals and also maintain those? Positioning, recognizing that our administration, now we hired and has our kids, especially with the education. You know, how much difference can we make? Yeah, we can support it. But really, we can also continue to communicate with the community and inform people about the data and about the stuff that I think is reported during our meetings. So maybe this could be what these two bullets are. It's continuing educational progress, ministry students, including DCS teachers, I think is the same one that's over there this last year, right? But then there have been other initiatives over the last five years, we spent a lot of money to have those kind of things. To do an analysis, which was very wide, uh, ranging and involved data from families and parents and teachers. And we got this reported. And I would love to hear more about how that progress is going, um, but it's like it fell, you know, down because of COVID. Um, D I J work, we have some really cool um, ideas and priorities, and I think that's an important. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, and, and I'm sure we all know that our, we don't have a lot of diversity in this school, but that to me is all in all reason to, to recognize it and value it, because the people who, places where we do see diversity in our school feel like, you know, they aren't represented when they look around and look at their peers, and that's, that seems to me seems like a hugely valuable way to support our students and our community. And to hear more about that and to then be able to communicate with our, with our families in town that wonder what kind of work is happening. I think that, that seems to be like something we need to make this point.
Yeah.
How, you know, how, like, we don't do that work, but we hear about it. And, and we, if we prioritize it, we say that's one of our goals, then I think that's a signal and a message to, to the community, the school community. That's where we would like to support, that's where we can report. Get the information to be able to.
So like look back to what Danielle said about somehow getting, or doesn't have to be presented, it can be reported.
Right. Right.
And maybe other, I'm sure there's one other bullets, go back, be feel free to, you know, what, what's important to you, you know, why do you like the school board that? It's a creation. There's parents out there who have these questions, and how do we, how do we inform the community about this thing? Good question, Russell.
Yeah, I mean, I think in general, communication with the community is a challenge, right? Like, I don't disagree with one of our uh, public commentators that we could utilize the town site to distribute our agenda, but the agenda in and of itself is not gonna do that much. Like, people will get updated.
I know, they're very expensive.
Yes, they're very expensive, as we know, um.
But it's also important, I mean, that's what, like, twelve hundred dollars maybe sends something to.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there's like a very important issue that we, but it's challenged, how we, how we put it on a mailer is very challenging, right? Like, it has to be very controlled.
Yeah. I wasn't, yeah, I was thinking more about, I wasn't thinking about issue, I was thinking more about, just saying, about educational progress. How it's going on, initiative.
We, we do, sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanna add one other thing too, that I think is important, see emotional well-being. Exactly sure how to gauge that, but I don't think that's incredibly important.
Yeah, especially if it's, it's, Ross, the.
Um, not that I want to volunteer myself for a lot more work, but.
What are you telling me, we love you?
I have looked around at other schools, and there are other communities that have like school board chair bulletins or whatever. So they're like a little newsletter that says, these are all the things that we're working on, these are our goals, this is, these are the things that are works. It's, um.
Problems online, online's great, there are a lot of people that don't.
Right, and you've put some on Facebook, you just.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't look at it.
Yeah.
We only have about a hundred and forty-one people who follow the school board.
It's too good to the comment about the town website, because I already hit, we started that last year and we added, and we still have the, I don't know, we don't sure if we can get the password. But there was like a login to post to the town bulletin.
Okay, I mean, I can talk to John, totally.
And that was maybe, have a mailing. Can you tell more about this, this is, there's a, there's a site on the town page, there are people who subscribe to it. And town, you were referring to this in your comments earlier, they subscribe to the town page names.
It's not a newsletter site, uh, every, I'll take the Heritage Commission as an example. We have a page on the town site. Uh, when we post, and, and there's, most importantly, there's a subscribe function. Go to townofdeerfieldnh.com slash subscribe, and you will end up on a page where you can subscribe to uh, anything, you know, minutes, agendas, uh, you know, announcements, whatever. Long list of things you can subscribe to, which is generated by all the pages on the town website. Pick, pick what you want, and you're subscribed. So anytime the Heritage Commission posts uh, minutes or notice of a meeting, it gets sent out to everybody who asked to be uh, notified when something gets posted. It's, it's just a, it's a real, what do they used to call them, uh, in the early days of the internet, uh, some, some sort of list, a listserv. Yeah, it's basically a listserv, and it, it's very efficient, it's low cost. Um, there, I think it's something like a thousand, I haven't, I haven't looked for about a year. Uh, but it's, uh, it, it's, it reaches a fair number of people. And, and it's not just, you know, it's not the same kind of thing that you have on your site. It's really more for, you can do that, you can put on any amount of stuff on it that you want to. But I think the, the helpful stuff is notify people when you're meeting, stuff like that, so they'll show up.
Yeah, right.
A recap.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I struggle with the idea of a recap, take you down, only because.
If you wanna take charge of this.
Right.
Every time Kristen sends the bridge, you could put it on that site, so people in the community could subscribe to the bridge and see what's happening in school every week. It's like, yeah, that's, that's what you have to think about, is what do people wanna know, and that's a great way to share all the things that are happening.
Is there um, room on the bridge occasionally to have a school board, you know? Like I know you do sometimes a letter from the principal or whatever, is there ever room that is wanted?
I just, I stood there for like three years, like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to talk about it.
I'm not getting into it.
I wouldn't do that, but maybe like once a month or something like that.
So it's, it seems like you're getting into your communication goal.
So it's, it seems like you're getting into your communication goal. So if you want to, it sounds like you're all agreeing.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah.
So I think brainstorming the objectives and the way to get to that goal, which is all these things that you're talking about.
Yeah, I. That was big on my list.
Yeah, yeah. So these are good ideas to. Yeah, we don't have to um solve it all, solve our own piece today, but.
Right, right.
Coming up with those ideas.
That'd be a goal, coming up with a goal.
But I think everyone agrees that it is still important. Potentially lofty goal, but a goal that is important.
Forward momentum.
Correct. Um, okay, sorry. So I feel like I'm going back and forth a lot, but to go back to the twenty 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 three goals. I will say you guys nailed the third goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, you did, yeah.
Nailed it. DCS repairs, sub system, fire alarm system, parking lot roof.
Done, yeah.
Done. Excellent. Um. I think one other thing I sort of wanted to discuss while we're discussing goals is. Um, and then we'll talk about yours soon. Um. I, I don't know what was traditionally done with the goals after they were passed. Or voted on or approved or whatever. But I would like sort of a, to think about how we can bring goals back to meetings occasionally. To review them, see if you made progress. You know, I obviously work in a very like corporate world, so I'm not suggesting this, but like. We have our, for our department goals, for instance, we have monthly. They put up our goals and they put like red, yellow, green where we are with the goals. So if we are, have not accomplished the goals at all. We get a big red circle and it's like, ah, um, it's a little scary. Um, but then, you know, if you're, if you paint some arrows, you get a yellow circle. And if you accomplish your goal, you get a green circle.
That's the approach to the template board took last year. They actually developed a template and they would go in and we put it on every work session's agenda. Um, sometimes it got pushed aside, but most of the time they were looking at almost every month when something was accomplished, they would put the date in that it was accomplished and then talk about the things that's still to be done.
Yeah.
But you're right, when we get all the goals and then you don't look at them.
Right. Like it was honestly sort of news to me that there were goals.
You can. Uh huh.
Uh, so we can put them, we can have that plan for you to put them on every work session agenda.
If something crazy comes up and you decide, let's put those off a month, that's fine, but.
Yeah. I think that's a great.
You know, if you wanna do a template like that and put in a bunch of new goals, it's a bit, but yeah, I like that.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a nice visual.
It's very like, it's very corporate America, but it is effective. And that's, and it was helpful when they did, when they broke it down. That's why it's just objectives. Because you can already have the overarching communication goal and then you break down the pieces. And those little pieces are the things that you have to check off.
Yeah, right, those are the things you can check off, yeah. It's something to check out. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I think it's a, I think that would be great. I don't wanna um, I don't wanna forget about them. I also think um when creating the agenda, if there are specific agenda items that. Touch on some of the goals, we could add it as a reference. Like, if we're talking about. Communication, let's say, we could say goal two or whatever, just so we're like keeping track of. Well, we don't have to do that, but.
People remember, if you look at them every month, you have to remember like, oh, hey, we talked about that at our meeting and.
True, that's true. Right.
Get to fill that up.
I think it will, I think personally it will help me with setting the agenda because there's like, obviously. Things we need to deal with at the meeting, things that are very timely, things that need a decision. Uh, and sort of the bigger loftier like theoretical things don't always make it onto the agenda. So I think that would be. Um, do you wanna talk about your goals?
I guess so.
Okay, you don't have to.
Um, the first one was just finalizing fine tuning school choice, you know, what we're working on now. Cause I imagine this, even though we'll get there at some point. Soon, hopefully, I can't imagine it's gonna be the end all be all. So I just figured it's something that we're gonna have to continue to stay kind of addressed and. Hear comments from the community just to fine tune it. Um, and figure out.
If there's gonna be a longer term.
Right, yeah.
Resolution or if there's.
Yeah, I'm talking about it for you, but yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah.
If you do a three, you're agreed and you don't wanna wait, so you're two or three to.
Right. Right.
Start tackling what's next.
Yeah, so lots of figure out what's next.
Um, identify reasonable school expansion options similar to what Nate was saying. And I think with Ellen as well, you know, and maybe even rewording that, but not just school expansion options, but school expansion slash updates or. Um rearrangement, you know, just. Space needs.
Space needs.
And then the last one was just a thought, the, it was an article that I saw. Um, local food options for school lunch. I have, I don't even know the realm of possibilities where this is at, but I know there are schools across the nation that do do this. And I thought. Is that something that would save us money, build a bridge between school and the community somehow? And offer just really healthy nutrition for our kids? I have no clue. But it was a thought I had. Um, I did look through some grants. I don't know how to do that very well. I'm very new in that area. But I did see there was a grant option for, I think the state of New Hampshire, I'm looking at local. Sources for school lunches. Um. So it's just, that was kind of a little bit of a pipe dream that I have there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly happy to like chat about it or if invite people in the community who might know about it. Because. When you, when you look into the community, like people have all sorts of expertise and they have sorts of various things. So I, I wonder if we could find someone who knows more about them. Um, one thing I was thinking about, which sort of goes along with the building stuff, but I would like to. Sort of formalize a capital improvement plan in terms of like big projects, timelines. I think it would be very helpful to create like a narrative about things that are gonna need to get done. Like if we're redoing flooring or if we're doing whatever. Um, and sort of. Like. If we're doing flooring or something, that would have to be done in the summer. So like just sort of outlining because. Truthfully, a big fear of mine is that Zach is going to be done, I think. Um, and he has, he's such a wealth of knowledge about the facility. And I just, while he's here, would like to sort of formalize a plan. Um, to figure out if we're, if we are redoing flooring, like would we put that on? It's a warrant article. Would we try to put that in a budget? Like what, I don't even know. The realm of costs that we're talking about. Um, yeah.
Whether it's wanted. File with the committee, the commission, planning board as our C I P.
Yes.
I think it's required to be updated every five years or something.
So weren't they supposed to kind of revitalize that? And you were graphic, you never got, you never heard a word.
Yeah. I have heard that planning board is revitalizing. The capital plan or something. Do you get it? Oh, you're on the planning board too now.
I'm an alternate.
Oh.
But as Mr. Shivelhut said last night, uh, we're, the master plan, which which is separate from the C I P. And the C I P are both being updated. We're working on that. And uh, there should be some progress on that. Now that some other things are out of the way, conduits, uh, culprits, excuse me. But yeah, that's, there's a C I P and I think he spoke to that last night, if you watched that. He spoke to that last.
Yeah, I did, yeah. Was sort of made me think of.
Yeah.
Ours. So how does, ours is a chapter in the town. So the town was supposed to contact Nate. We sent them Nate's name and said Nate's our rep.
Okay.
It it, it's it's alleging to get the process going.
But I don't know that it. Yeah.
But I think the process is.
Okay, okay. So we are a chapter of the.
We just, yeah, we need to not get forgotten.
And then.
In the C I P, we're also.
No, C I P, yeah.
Yeah.
Ours is part of that and they were asking for a school board rep to be part of the C I P process.
Also, also. Master plan.
Writing and the.
So I think where, where, you know, Nate.
Might have been mastered in that.
I think, yeah, I, yeah, I think the, the, I think it's a chapter in the C I P maybe and rep on the.
Oh, was it? Oh, okay. Oh, and that's like many.
And I'm still waiting for that meeting to occur as well, so.
Okay, so can you explain the difference to me between those two things?
I, I, I have zero experience with master plan. So I know about the C I P, what the process was, went through was we use. Feedback that we got from when we brought in engineers to do the engineering study of building.
Right.
We got information from that. So then prioritize those with the help of the. So.
So just the Hampshire way.
So the administrative commission, thank you. And they, they helped us finalize this. They would like maybe ten items or eight items or something in a prioritized sequence. And we scored each one of them. It was like we. Valued the top right or even the bottom. The uh gist or like the takeoff is that kind of as our facility gets used.
Right.
By all of the new people working down, working population growth numbers as part of it. Um, but then with every house that's sold, we get, there's some extenuating.
In that piece.
Yeah.
In that piece and those, in that piece are last for ten years of what they expire or something like that.
Didn't that process change in the last warrant article?
What is that? We can use that to do facilities.
I thought.
I think the, the distinction between the master plan and the C I P is the C I P is internally driven. And the master plan is really a community wide event, which will be focus groups and. Questionnaires and everybody in town participates in theory with a vision sort of driving things. And then the C I P is much more internally sourced, as you just described. With with actual perceived needs by people who are running things on the ground.
Do you know when the C I P was last updated?
That'd be, it's, I'm sure some things are ticked off. Um, but so maybe from, from the C I P, like in Cameron, we have. Our facilities director handles the C I P and he, so he'll have um what you're talking about. We, I'll just use a vehicle. We don't, we only have a vehicle here, but we own this facilities truck. So he knows every five years he needs to replace that truck. So he knows now every five years he's gonna come up with fifty thousand dollars. So he'll have ten thousand dollars going into a trust fund for it. So that when the replacement cycle happens, the money's already there. So that's the kind of thing you're talking about. What's next? And you can choose to say, or we know every classroom, I don't know, it means a floor replaced, a cycle of floor replacement. So you could. Put that in. So how much money do I need to put in each year to get one classroom back a year for the next ten years? Whatever it may be.
Sure.
But it's look, doing what you're talking about, Zach is very knowledgeable about. To look at the facility with Chris, obviously, but you know, you've got the big things. So.
Yes.
You know, your roof, you, that wouldn't go in there yet because you're gonna hopefully get many, many years on this brand new roof and the brand new fire alarm panel on the. So you're looking at more five to ten years.
Yeah, I just, I, my concern, I know there's been a lot of big project, I, I'm concerned about some little or maintenance that's like.
Yeah.
Like floor replacements. Flooring or like whatever things that I wouldn't necessarily.
The unit ventilators that we keep talking about.
Correct, like having some sort of plan.
Yeah.
To at least every year we can say, okay, what's feasible to put on a warrant article or whatever this year. Without having to wait for something to fail and then have it be an emergency.
So um, where is this list? Whatever you want.
A formal, a formal document is what it is.
I think it's on the town.
And we need to have a conference.
I mean, we, we, I don't know that we ever, we kept asking if it had even been finalized. I mean, we went through this whole process with never getting feedback.
So.
I don't know that we ever received an officially approved.
So maybe they, maybe.
Master document. All right, well, I'll dig around, see what I can find. Um, but again, we're now getting in into the nitty gritty of the goals, which is obviously there are a lot of things we need to talk about.
Yeah.
Well, our, that was our portion. We decided like this is.
Oh, you mean like zone documents.
Yes, yes. I don't, you never got to find, we decided like, yeah, this is what we're going with. This is our C I P. And that's a chapter in the, in the town. But there are funds from town development.
Not really woven, uh, it's used.
We, we, at least a lot of.
But that was a good, we, four years ago.
Right, yeah. But it would be.
We started to build up.
Right, it would be nice to know from where we're at with that.
I didn't realize.
I think, I will forget about it. See, this is what I would need as a goal. Okay. Um, anything else for goals? So I will plan to sort of draft. Um, a rough draft of all of the goals we talked about. I'll maybe add in. You know, lofty goals and then more of like objective things. And then we can take a look. Um. Do we wanna take a look? So our next meeting is a work session. Do we wanna do it as a work session or do we wanna do it in our next business meeting? That's the next week that I'm. Okay. So I will get it, um, get something drafted and then we can talk about it the next.
Probably depends on where you're at with the high school stuff.
That is true. That's true. The next. Okay.
Well, we wanna take care before we get budget.
Yes, correct, yeah.
So let it go.
Well, I think everything, probably about the season.
I just mean developing agendas, where it goes is probably gonna partly depend on that. Thinking of that.
We'll figure it out. Okay. Um, high school updates?
Yeah, so um, so we're, we located a property in just a couple of years we had, so we're not gonna be located in that. I was working on a couple of town contracts that are for co-grounds. So trying to figure out how to. She's in contact with the principal, but I'm not contacting that. Wants an idea of what is there so we know what we want, what we want in our contract. And then um, I've contacted Dover High School twice. I haven't heard back from the principal. I went to Patty and asked her if she contacted the superintendent. Said he was gonna contact the principal and look.
Um, I heard back from the superintendent initially that he would get back to me. Um, he did reply to my email and said he would get back to me, but I haven't heard that yet.
So we hung out with Dover. We were asking if they could take our kids.
Yes.
So that's very much where we are right now.
Potentially for our schools.
Yeah, Dover doesn't get back to us because we don't even know if they can take our kids and they're not getting back to us. So it's. Initially, they had responded that they could, but that was a couple of years ago. So I think he felt like he needed to go back out and get some more information.
Um, so there is obviously more that the board needs to discuss in the public.
Yeah.
Related to negotiations, yeah. Um, so unfortunately, we are not voting on the final plan tonight. Um. I will. I think, you know, our, the presentation to the town is available on the website if you wanna look at it. Obviously, we are still taking feedback if people want to give us any additional input. Uh. And we will keep everyone updated. If, when we, when we have a timeline, what that might look like.
Yeah, I think that's. I like to say that, I mean, we wanted to have something really quickly and that was our goal, but have to take a step back and think about what everybody's saying, what's the best from the town and not to rush it. You know, like, one person said, you know, just get it done and get it done right. Well, that doesn't happen overnight. That's something that is a lot of different kinds of negotiation and going back and forth and. Thinking, okay, well, let's try this and then that doesn't work and let's do that. So we are taking it very seriously, but we're taking our time because we do wanna do it right.
Right.
And so it's not gonna be done immediately. And I know it's hard for the kids coming in eighth grade. We totally get that. But we also know that it looks like three schools, so we still have three schools coming and meeting with the kids. You don't have to ever finalize right then. Just something we have to talk about getting these schools. So I, I just wanna make sure that's clear, not, not like all of a sudden we're backing off and not doing anything.
Yeah, I mean, we are trying to. Be solicitant feedback and I think we are trying to do our best to listen to the feedback and. You know, in some ways go back and figure out what, what the goal is and what we're trying to accomplish and how we can pay for it. So. We'll figure it out. It just is not gonna be tonight, right?
Um, or two weeks.
Yes, probably not.
And do we need to start scheduling this?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. So. Should we do that or is this?
No, we do it here at the school.
Not me and Helen come here.
Oh, so board meeting, you mean?
No, 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 no.
So.
Do we start discussing that?
To have them come and visit our schools? What do you ask?
No, no, no. We wanna have them to come and present something to the students and parents about this is what our school wants.
Right, so that would be more dated with DCS and the guidance and.
Yeah. Okay, so. So is that something that we just like, do you want me to contact Heather or Greg and just say, hey, you'd really like to?
Sure, it, C C Brian and I, that'd be great.
Okay, sure, yeah, all right. I can do that.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Um, yeah, it probably would go to me first, yeah. Okay, um yeah, it probably would go to me first, yeah, for the school.
Yeah, I would ask Patty.
All right, Patty. You could see.
I've got it. Yeah, I think the the general premise is that um while we're not prepared to make a decision about what things will look like.
Pretty much.
I think we are. You know, understanding that people want to see kids go to Concord, Co Brown and Pembroke. And so I would encourage families to start looking. Um you don't know what it's gonna cost, we don't know how many kids might go to each place, but um but it's important to start looking if you're, especially if you're in eighth grade and paying right. To to start investigating.
Should that be a part of early comes up? You know, your old school board notes and the next bridge is like, okay, great parents, I'm starting thinking about that. I'm sure there there are eighth grade parents that we're not aware of of all of this.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's possible, so how do we get?
I mean, once we spoke, once we scheduled it, then we equipped them, yeah, the with the date.
I would love it.
Like this is what we wanna do, this is why.
Yeah, where the D C schools are invited.
Be nice if we could have Dover High School, which is the one that they have one of the only person that chose to. Was blessed.
Um anything else for high school updates? Okay. Um date for C H S student report.
So we have the student success report that we get every year, it looks very similar each year. Um and we have traditionally had representatives from Concord High School comment, go over the report and talk about um our students that currently at C H S. So I let them know that I would give back to them with a date on what evening we want them to come.
I guess.
Talk to you of this report.
Is that the same meaning where students come?
Last year, they had students come.
Okay.
It could be what how it were, if you just want, in the past, it was administrators.
Yeah.
Um I think the principal at the time thought, hey, let's have you hear from kids. Um so if you if you want me to ask for a student to come, if you just want admin to come and go through the report with you, whatever the structure is, they're open to that, so.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have them come twice?
Right.
Once for this evening, once for.
Well, they're coming, they would come just to you about this, which is what you've asked for in the past. And then the when they come here for the evening, I think it's more to learn about the school for the eighth graders.
Yeah, and they would send their app into them.
So I think it would be a different, it would be two different things.
And it might be two different groups.
Cause you're not gonna talk about that evening, you're not gonna talk about how your kids are doing there now. You're talking about how do we draw? Well, if they're here twice. Yeah, I mean, I I think they start next, so they should same night.
Is it worth having, do we wanna have all, maybe the difference when we've asked this question is, do we wanna have all three of these schools, Pembroke, uh Concord and Co Brown, all in the building, all in the same night? And like they take turns presenting and then the families just come and look at it?
No.
Or do they each have a separate night and they can do some sort of presentation or whatever?
I don't know, why don't we set up like a college fair?
Yeah.
They they have their little tables and whoever kind of comes up to their table can ask questions, open questions about their school and they they do the work, it's just a depth.
It's a one person who represented representative comes.
How are they wanna do it?
I think we've had experience with this and I'd rather work with guidance and topics.
Yeah.
See what the best, what what has created the best response we've done this.
I I have no, I have no opinion as to the best way to for schools to come.
Yeah, the only time I had it when you said like they each had a different night, parents would just come come to that one school that they think their kids that they wanted to go and they're not gonna experience with the other schools offer.
I think three separate nights is a big ask for a lot of families.
There was a year that we had schools come because and they I just remember them remarking that it was. It was kind of funny for them because like one school was waiting in the hall for the other school to do their thing and they did their thing.
Oh, right, and we said they truly didn't want to like that.
Yeah, it was, I think it was P A Concord, uh because they felt like, are we supposed to be in there? Like, are you gonna listen to what the other high school has to offer? Uh so everybody was in the same place, so we we could talk those kinks out about how that worked and what that looked like. But I think one night is probably better for families to write than to. But we can work on just because of that.
Yeah, I.
The other option is just. The other thing is that also kind of nice to just have a presentation to the kids, come and talk to them in the school.
As.
And that's what I, my point, I guess, is having that night a year ago when they brought all of their high school students. All of this data about how our kids are doing at Concord, that's that's something that other schools don't have, so is that, does that give them unfair data out of it? Fair or appropriate way to do this is, but but that's a very powerful presentation, I thought, with having the kids there, it was great, so I don't know. We should just consider it, I guess, I don't know if the experts.
Yeah, I I don't know the answer. Um yeah, I was there last year and I agree, it was a very enlightening conversation to hear from directly from the high school kids. It was not super well attended. So not to say that we shouldn't invite them back or like, but I'm cognizant of high schoolers also having things to do. I don't know.
I if you don't wanna, I mean, they don't, they don't, you can have this be a standalone, you can say, look, got the report, we looked at it, we read it, we're good.
Right.
Right, you can plan your tree, it's whatever the board. Would find most helpful, I don't know what they're. But they'd offer to come, in the past, that's what the board has wanted, when this report came out in the fall, they would come and talk to the board. But I think the feedback from one board meeting was they went, just went through all of this, which you had already read. You need to eat the food, so and that's why we started changing a couple of it. So if you think what they're gonna cover, what they need to cover the night that they come. Skip the second one first, to order of going.
I don't, I honestly don't have that much of a preference because I wasn't here for the old meetings where they just reviewed the report. Um I think. We at least need to have our own session to talk about the report. And have every, make sure everyone has reviewed it and discussed it, um whether or not Concord wants to come to that, I think. Is the question.
If you want to review it and discuss it, then it would make sense to have people from Concord, more than people from Concord here.
Yeah, I mean, I think if if one of our goals is talking about and understanding student achievement, not only at D C S but. C H S, I think. We would have to. Have people here, right, to talk about student achievement in high school.
Everybody with students, I like making a question.
I think it's if it's beneficial for the students, I think that's great to have them. I think that's a great exercise, but.
So if if you want to talk about and go through this report. I just want to give them direction on what you want this to look like, there are some, so say the principal or the curriculum, whoever comes, goes through this report, then what are students doing when they come? Are they just talking about their experiences at Concord?
The meeting last year did not go through the report.
No, it didn't, that's why I was asking what you want, yeah.
No, that's why I was asking what you want.
Right, about their experience at Concord.
This clubs and activities, yeah.
This conversation is specifically about this report of what you want to do with this, if anything. Okay, so I did have a question, an historical question.
So the goal, maybe that's why this was a goal, because we could actually talk about this last year, so we were able to meet, so we did the goal because we didn't. Make a priority, just listen to Congress presentation, which was great.
Yeah.
But we didn't talk about it.
But it wasn't this, okay, sorry. No, so I have a historical question, so I was like looking back, I don't remember where I was looking for it, but there was meeting minutes that referenced like a high school representative that came to the school.
Yeah, kids.
You just have Deerfield High School kids at Concord come and do a presentation about like the monthly.
What's going on, yeah.
Kind of like the principal reported the last month at the C S, they would provide um.
C H S.
Take you to a presentation.
Yeah.
Student presentation. Yeah, I mean, to to me, it seems like that would be helpful, but it's also a lot of work for a student.
It's not, the way it was done was that um they they the Concord students, there are maybe two elected, I don't know, selected representatives who do a presentation to the Concord school for a monthly basis. They make this presentation.
They could use the same one, yeah.
Is the presenting the same presentation?
Oh, got it, okay.
It wasn't like a lot of, it wasn't like a lot.
I see, okay. And they would just comment, oh, we did the the musical was this and there were, you know, there were some Deerfield kids in it and so and so had the lead and, you know, what's going on in C H S. I just, I wonder if that's sort of um. I mean, I do think it was a very useful conversation to have all the kids here last year. Um I'm not sure if we need to have the exact same presentation again. Like it should be just, I feel like I just heard from from all them, but um.
That's, I think that's effective for parents to hear that, I think for students to hear that, quite likely with the selection process.
Yeah. Yes.
Us to hear that, I agree.
Right. I don't know that, I mean, I would love to have and think about having some representation from the high school or high schools plural, um whatever things end up looking like. Um. Think about how we can. Think about high schools.
So what are you saying?
I don't know, I don't have an answer.
Are you saying so, okay. So we wanna have presentations to parents and students about the three different schools. We know that when we have a nightly event, not a lot of people attend. Is it worthwhile to have a nightly event with the three schools, but also have the schools come? And present to the students, like something during the school day, they just come in, they come into the library, the auditorium, they do a quick presentation on the school. Each school comes back from the students, but we also can have a joint one.
I mean, I would personally love to get guidance's feedback on that, because I don't know what's. But in terms of this report.
To get back to the report itself. Is this something that can we just look through this and if we have questions about it, can at put it towards Concord when they come to us after?
I think we have to divorce the report and.
Right. Okay, all right.
Let's talk about the student success report, do you want someone to come from Concord and walk through this review at a board meeting? That's the question off the table. I think that's all I want to know, I I say yes.
I will say yes to Concord. I should say I'm kind of lost in the moment.
Just no motion, don't worry.
Yeah, we have just sort of looking at the.
We don't, we don't know.
We haven't gotten anywhere.
No, so I think I think it would be nice to hear. I think mostly because we have never sat through this report presentation, I don't know what's in the, I mean, I've glanced at it.
I mean, I would.
Um but I think it would be helpful for them to walk through. So ask for a couple of administrators from high school, whatever they.
And I think what's really good about it too is it also sets us up, if, you know, we have kids going to other high schools. We kind of have this as a foundation about how our kids do in other schools. You know, we have a good idea what's important, what is it that we're looking at, or the things that we're gauging success and we can use that in other schools as well.
And what meeting would you like them to come? Um. Good question, the school board is doing a training for you on the second meeting in October. Okay. The school board association uh is coming due October eighth.
Yes.
Yes, to an individualized training for two, three board members. Um. We have a lot in every meeting, so I'm just worried about really stacking.
I just have to say, I don't think they need to present this before we figure out. This whole stuff.
No.
Like I, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I know they don't, it's just something we're gonna use.
But then we're also getting into budget season and budget meetings. Take a while. Um.
You want to see if they can come on October, whatever, it's the first meeting October or.
Yeah.
In that sort of the best.
And this, I'm assuming this is terribly long, right?
No, I'll tell them. Keep it to.
Yeah.
Can read, but it's just nice to have a point out.
Okay. Cool. Anything else?
Wait, yeah.
We made a decision and guidance is going to guide us about.
Yeah, we sent it to Heather and Patty, yeah, kind of expressing some ideas, she's gonna come and Greg, they can tell us what they, best options to do, all right.
Um board reports, um the executive board is meeting next.
Wait.
Wednesday. Wednesday, I don't think there was, I think there wasn't a meeting in August. So nothing. Principals report.
I'm sorry, this is like, I haven't seen me for since the summer, so this is like summer till last.
Talk fast.
Well, while you were talking, I'm like, I don't really need to show that, I'll take that out too. Um so uh we'll go back to the summer program, we had about sixty two students attend our summer program throughout the course of the summer and the promotions that. Through the course of the month of July is what we call it. Uh Ms. Luskowski uh sent me in an update of of what the program was, it was a different approach this year. Um the goal was to strategically group students into small groups to target specific skills, so we'd be grading spans of uh one to three, four or five in middle school. Each span had an assigned E L A and math teacher. Um in addition to that, there was a camp style meeting place in the gym, so kids could participate in um the group activities in there, building, you know, specifically focused on social emotional learning. Um they could have their snack in there, so once they went to an E L A lesson, then they could go take a break and have snack and then maybe that period they go to class and then. Uh it ran from three thirty to eleven thirty. Uh there's all, there was also a quiet reading room for students to go in and read to themselves, read to a partner or more read to a younger student. We were also able to incorporate our extended school year for our special ed students, so they uh were assigned their case manager or and they also received their related service um. Related services for routine P T and speech, according to their I E P, um but they were also able to participate in a camp style atmosphere as well. Um it was efficient structured and it really focused on skills and then in addition to that, um we ran a very successful kindergarten camp that was funded through our Title Four funding. It was a new program that had been charming some of the other schools in the district, so we pretty much copied what they were doing. So we had about ten students, it was geared towards students who did maybe a little bit of time in school, that see where the cafeteria was.
My granddaughter could use that.
No, did, coming, coming or?
No, she's a kindergarten.
Oh, a lot of schools are doing them now, so.
She really couldn't use it.
Oh, yeah. Um they find out what hobbies are and they sit in a circle and they hear their story and so that also was very successful. We had a first grade teacher who did that and then um a professional working in there as well. Um there was a lot of curriculum work that happened over the summer, uh specifically with K to three, the E L A and math. Uh we made this, we made this law and Jamie odd, they did um work with our K to three teams. Um in the L A, they adjusted the grade levels K to three, adjusted scopes, scope and sequences for word study instruction. Um increased their alignment with the science of reading, a lot of our teachers are taking the letters training, which is a. A phonological approach to teaching reading and they uh so they did a lot of work on how we're gonna incorporate the the best practices from there. Um into what we're currently doing, um phonics, social and foundations and that type of thing. Um discussed comprehension focus areas and looked at vocabulary strategies and then math. Math, a lot of our math teachers had attended um some workshops last year on math and power, which was building games and activities into the centers into the math block for T V C. Um we also had our world culture teacher, Mr. McCabe was in a couple of times over the summer to work on his curriculum, uh got touch with Amy Parkinson, did a little work with some of the grade level teams. And to align some of the work that he's doing with some of the social studies work that the team had brought to the certainty. Uh and um Mr. Luciano came in and did some uh work with the middle school math, because it was a new program for him and so he came in and did some work on that. Uh we also did some P L C work over the summer, mainly planning and streamlining how we want P L C, what we're moving forward from last year of P L C, as we had demonstrated success in last year. For um some of the coaching and training and so taking the model that they had last year and building it into what works for us, what didn't work for us, where can we take it? Uh where where do we need to um improve, what what are we gonna uh keep? Uh in addition, there was some eye ready training, so star assessments, as Patty had mentioned earlier. The Starbucks marketing sessions, we're not using Star this week, not this week, this year, the whole year, the whole year.
Ever again.
And it's an S A U wide decision, everybody in the S A U has. It's an SAU-wide decision. Everybody in the SAU has has switched to I-ready training or I-raise, um, benchmark assessments. Uh, so there was some training over the summer. We're still in the process of rostering students, trying to get that up and running, but the benchmarking will happen typically as it did with STAR as well. We also had summer leadership, um, on July nineteenth and twentieth, uh, a big welcome to Mr. Jeff Finley, who is our new co-supervisor with Patty. Um, Amy Parkinson is, uh, the alias for the curriculum construction and assessment director position. And a new principal at, uh, for yours, Bill McCarthy, has joined the SAU. So it was nice to get to know them and work with them over the summer. Uh, in addition to that, we continue working on aligning our thoughtful classroom practices, uh, including a principal effectiveness framework that Patty is, we'll probably talk to the board. We talked a little bit about it, but, um, there's going to be some goal setting and we have some next steps for the administrative team to to work on. Um, moving forward and just constantly working to include the systems and procedures over there as well, uh, for the SAU and with the districts, um, and and HART. Um, so quick in kindergarten update, I'm pretty sure you guys know by now, the board notes by now that, um, we had to make a couple of decisions to divide Mrs. Chase's kindergarten class to import kindergartens. Um, we're unable to find a one to ourselves. So this is the fifth time I've had to do this in this, since COVID bit time. I have had to call here, I personally called every parent to let them know, um, that was affected by this decision. So. Uh, it's never easy, but the the class size is still pretty strong. Mrs. Weir has fourteen, Mrs. Pickman has, uh, sorry, Mrs. Pickman has thirteen, Mrs. Weir has thirteen. So, um, those students have the ability to, when Mrs. Chase returns to go, um, return to her for kindergarten. Um, the class, they they go to IAs with their current class, but they go to, um, I'm sorry, they go to, uh, IAs as of Mrs. Chase's group, but except for library. Because it's was too much to think about who's going to go there in libraries that would be different than April. So they, uh, this worked well in first grade last year. We had to do this in first grade and the kids attended IAs together. So they were like, oh, you're in my class, oh, you're in my class, oh, you're in my class. So, uh, they were kind of familiar with each other when they got back together. So just some enrollment updates. We are up to thirty-eight students in preschool, both the third, the the three-year-old and the four-year-old, um, programs. Uh, our middle school is at one sixty. Our total enrollment right now, including our K to five is four ninety-seven. Um, I will have the, I the sheet, I have the sheet, but I didn't give it to Patty in time to, uh, update, to put it in the board drive, but I will get that to her. Um, our, we had ten new students move in for K to five and we had, um, uh, seven, seven new students who moved in for the middle school. So eighteen, eighteen students withdrew, seventeen new students, um, came into the, into our school. And moved to our school. Uh, one of the, I was looking at the numbers, just trying to think of the, we have four ninety-seven. It's been allowed since it's been under five hundred. Um, we have very small kindergarten class, forty students. We typically have upwards of closer to fifty. And, um, our, we just, our, we just graduated a very large eighth grade. That was a bubble class that traveled through the school. Um, at one point, that was being from the third grade class that every week goes to the third grader. I don't know if you guys remember that year. That was the year before I came. Um, and it was a large group. So, so we graduated a large group and we have a very small, these current eighth grades, I think, are forty-seven. So, um. That would account, I'd account for some of the numbers there. Just so you're probably up to date on that. August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, our staff returned. We welcomed some new staff members to our, to our school. We had a new faculty orientation. Uh, on August fifteenth was at Pembroke Academy with Amy Parkinson, the director of curriculum instruction assessment. And all of that team, the SAU people came, folks came down and introduced themselves. They were introduced to NLP and frontline and OPTA and all, all on, all the things, uh, that we have in our, in our SAU. On August sixteenth, they were, said the day of PCS. Um, we, uh, did a, we activity, we worked together in the library. We did a tour of the building. We, um, looked through some of the important things that they needed to know about in terms of the interior field. So as you know, Matthew McCabe, uh, is our world cultures teacher. Ms. Holly Penn is our art teacher. Ms. Mary Mary Margaret Pickman is joining us in kindergarten. Mrs. Andrea Clinch, our reading specialist. Krista Vilekia, also, that's her, her married name is Blondin, but you might, uh, know her name as Vilekia. She's our new seventh grade and eighth grade case manager. Mr. John Layton, um, switch roles with Mr. Bob Layton, and he is, um, in, in, in the building. Lisa Temple is our new school psychologist. She's an SAU employee, but she's the last four days a week. Uh, and Mrs. Gail D'Antoni is our new resource director, who, um, started pretty much this summer. She came in and got the lay of the land. Uh, we have some new parent professionals. Mrs. Donna Collins is, has joined us, Miss Shalom Vineyard and Miss Jennifer Messina. We still do have a couple of parent professional openings. Um, so if you have any friends or family that would need her jobs, we do have a fourth parent. What's that?
Miss Bailey might have to step off the board.
Good point. Never mind. Um, and we do have a new, another parent starting, I think, sometime in the late fall. So I'll make sure to give her a shout out when she arrives. We did just have a few staff updates. Stephanie Byer, who was a eighth grade parent professional, is a math and directionist this year. Jose Luciano moved to sixth grade and dropped out of, like, the eighth grade. Uh, we were fortunate to have a couple of interns, an art intern, Lily. Pashoyan. She says it's like Kardashian, but with a paw. So Pashoyan is in art with Mrs. Chase. And Mrs. Davis has an intern in music. His name is, um, Daniel Thompson, Mr. Daniel Thompson. We always have nurse intern. So Elizabeth Chapman joined us today. Actually, it was her first day. Did a great back school, um, barbecue, making to the board for all they did to end the PTO. Um, and, uh, a nice open house. August thirtieth is when those luggits came back into the building. And, uh, it was great to have them back at school. Our fall sports have begun, volleyball, cross-country and soccer. In fact, we have some games just next week. Um, soccer has, uh, both away and home games. Volleyball has a cold away game and a cross-country. First cross country. Which is always good to help. Um, today was picture day. And, uh, in addition to that, we have, everyone, say you know, we have our professional development Wednesday. We call it T D Wednesday. And, um, we started up, uh, the tier one team. Um. Uh, we did a survey last year in terms of what the news and the building are for professional development in one of the areas that this, the, a lot of the staff wanted, um, some more professional development. It was around more responsive classroom, more community building and community circle. Um, so as you know, at the end of school, we had two nineteenthers back professional developer day. We did a whole day around, um, building community circle and then advisory. And so we starting off the school year on our Wednesdays doing the book study. Our K to preschool, the K, uh, to fifth grade is, is doing the first six weeks, which is a responsive classroom book. All about, you know, establishing community books for six weeks of school. And, uh, the middle school is working, uh, out of the advisory book, which is, uh, just, just being more purposeful in our advisory and building community circle. Uh, with a format similar to a morning. And, um, we have advisory three days a week. So. Um, and in the lunch program, uh, the money, the lunch money four dollar, I know a couple of families have reached out saying, hey, my kid doesn't have any money. What do I do? Uh, we are, it's, it's been a little bit of a, uh.
Rocky.
A little rocky, a little headache, a little bit of a mess. We had, um, we had a, a POS, a point of service system that was outdated. And when we got our new person, uh, we decided to go with what the whole SAU is using, but we couldn't get the one that the whole SAU is using because they have the next version available. So we could go with that. Nobody else is using that. It also didn't align with the current, um, lunch money collection program that the SAU was using. So we could go with a different one. So it's been a little bit of a, of a mess. We had balances, families had balances on the old lunch system that didn't transfer. So we are literally having to like manually put them into the system. So, uh, we thank you for your patience, but, um, and no kid has gone hungry at all. That will never happen. So, uh, we are, we are still trying to work that. So. I know people come to the, like, saying, yeah, be patient. As soon as I have information, I'll let you know. But that's, we have to.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um.
Uh, why does that work? Let's start testing.
So, yeah, um, I don't, I think it was a, a principal in Pembroke that had used it at another, in another school district. And, no, I ready, had used I ready and started talking about it with everybody. And we're like, yeah, let's look into it. It was a pretty much an even. Financially, it wasn't even swamped. There was a little T to get an increase. Um, a lot of people like, I ready is used in a lot of, of schools in the city of Hampshire. Well, the cross country, but definitely in the city of Hampshire. In fact, I told the staff that we're going to be switching. So many staff members, oh, yeah, I used that money at school. I used that five years ago when I was in Nashville. I used that when I was in Montgomery. So it is a wide, you widely used benchmarking system. And it also has an instructional piece that goes with it. That's an additional cost, which we did not purchase for this year, um, what we can still.
I think it, uh, it was the first time I've ever seen this entire SAU unanimous from the beginning. It was, I thought maybe we'd do a study this year because that's usually how everything works. And everyone said it's much better than STAR. And I think that there's an instructional, there's an instructional tool that is free. It's not the, like, the lesson planning piece, but you could. What I've heard is you can get much more information on how to target the gap with each student. You can look at and drill down a lot more, get better reports, better information. Um, to actually utilize the data that you're getting is what I've been hearing.
But all the benchmarking we've been doing in STAR, it's just gone. Like, we can't transfer that to our parent.
No, we have, you know, we have, we have it. We have our data.
But you can, but you can, can we transfer across assessments from last year to this year?
Yes. Yes. Cause it's, but, yeah, it's, it's benchmarking where the students are at. So it wasn't tailored to our curriculum specifically. And it's nationally normed, same as STAR. So. Yeah, it'll be a little bit different, but still give us the data. And you can't look into each student to see where the differences are.
It will all do that. So. It's been the training. I know Brian went and Lisa went as well. I was.
Yeah, just especially could be out of COVID, obviously. I mean. Lost a lot.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, just didn't want to simply.
All right, it's sort of being saved.
I just think we transfer between two different types.
Right, well, you'd be able to, yeah. So like, if, you know, one student had a phonological awareness issue, then it's going to be the same in the other test. And you would look back to make sure, say, like, oh, this is a. An anomaly or something. This was just right off the top of my head. Cool. Thank you. Um, curriculum review board. Okay. Policies. Um. Here's to that. Wait. To you. I'm a little inclined to wait, except for that all of our next meetings are also very long. So.
It's up to you. I'm going to try it. See how we do.
The meal charging was not ready yet, so we can skip that. So GCG was the hard time and substitute professional staff, um, employment, which was a recommended policy. It is extremely short.
Right.
Uh, this was on the agenda because your, your policy for this was last updated nineteen ninety-four. So it is a recommended policy. You can choose, it's not required. If you feel like that, um. Paragraph is important for you to have a policy, then you can do so or you can rescind the policy, but you don't want to keep your nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah, I'll have to move the, I'll move the AHSP version of the, uh, policy GCG.
Second. Any discussion? Quite short.
Yeah.
And I assume it's something that is already happening.
Yes. And, you know, I forgot to mention, I'm going to change where it says substitute pay. It will be set by the executive board because we agree as an SAU to keep our sub pay the same.
Okay.
Just wanted to share.
Do you have a motion to make that, Ben?
Um, no, as long as you're. We're approving it without understanding.
It says the school board, but I would have the executive just insurance. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. IHI is tuition of resident students to secondary vocational programs, which was in March of nineteen ninety-three. Um, and it does not exist in the school board association manual. And it's probably not something that I need because you're gonna, you don't need anything about tuitioning vocational programs. You're working on an entirely new delivery for high school in general.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Next is JJC, which is student productions. And I believe that was the one that you criticized, right, Nate?
Yeah, but I put in a little version that.
It's a lot. And the, the one is in the drive, right?
It's, yeah, I mean, it is.
Just make sure that's in the drive for tonight so we get the right one.
Yeah, myself.
Okay, perfect. I will second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is a JKA, which is corporal punishments. Maybe I didn't say those words. Um, because, you know, because another one that we found that had been approved in nineteen ninety-three. Um, and there is a corporal punishment policy that still exists today. Um, it is recommended, not required. And it is, again, one paragraph that I guess you can decide, like you said, do we need to say this, um.
Right.
I mean. Is any of this reflected anywhere else?
Absolutely.
Right.
Like, that's, yeah, you don't, you don't, you can't, uh, two paragraphs to tell teachers that they can't administer corporal punishment. That is a crime.
Don't, we could just have one that says, don't commit crime. We have a pretty good system in place about how we handle students poor history. I've never witnessed them doing anything out of line, so. I mean, it seems like a little silly to rescind it, but I don't think it's necessary. Uh, so I will make a motion to rescind the policy.
Okay.
Any discussion? But if. But if.
Tell, tell last, just don't count.
I will report, we have saved this policy. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, we're, we're cruising. You guys are too brave. And then the wellness policy. I think, we have any other suggestions on that one, right? The wellness policy was just a meal target we're working on. Yeah, so all of the edits were made for the wellness to represent what actually work off this in our school.
Uh, and there is a.
It's. It's the school board's version that it has my red line edits on it.
Can I have another red edit? Or is that?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
I was wondering, and maybe I've been looking at the wrong one too, under physical activity, which is the eighth or sixth students, not the seventh.
Where is, what, where are you? What page?
I don't know. It's the, the page.
Which page, sorry?
Third.
Page three of that.
Right?
And it's like.
You have four.
I'll see if it says right here.
School boards. Oh, yeah, that's your, right, K through six. All right, so that's different, but.
It was two boards.
Yeah, so we're looking at the school board, um, associations and.
I will, I will.
Yep.
Yeah, there's been so many, I feel like there's been a bunch of versions of this.
Yeah, I agree. There is.
And we need to establish that this is not the version that we're using.
The red line school board association version.
Red line.
It's maybe you have to download it as Word for them to show.
Okay.
I can, I can kind of ask you, upload it as a PDF if you want to make sure we're looking at the same policy.
Yeah.
Right.
That's the problem with going between Word and Google Docs, is that Google Docs don't show the red lines of the text.
Right.
Okay. If I can leave the question.
And you know, this, just for in the future, this has so many, like, goals. I would really love to be able to. That seems to be out of the, I'm, I'm doing that. Are we doing that? You know, so I'd really like to have.
Yeah.
And that kind of goes a little bit, as you were talking about. I mean, I know that it's locally sourced food, but it was more for health.
Deerfield's always been great about the wellness committee. There's always one, there's always the nurse in charge of it. That's, they've been great about that, but.
But I'd love to hear.
Yeah.
How, how well.
Um, okay, great. We need some progress. Excellent. Information. Information at all. Do you want to go first?
Sure. So I want to remember to talk to you about the New Hampshire housing study. So I almost put it in my spam folder because I thought it was like a solicitation. I'm glad I didn't. So I received an email from urbanomics.org, who is a planning consultant. And they had shared that they're preparing several case studies for individual school districts that understand the relationship between housing development and school enrollment within the context of fiscal impacts. So basically to see if the assumptions you make when you have new developments and housing in your districts, does it really prove to be true? So does it really, when you have a new development going up at the school, says, oh, my gosh, we're going to have all these kids? Does it really happen? Is there really a cost? So they're doing, they were commissioned by New Hampshire Housing to do this study. And they specifically, and they're looking for volunteer districts. But he said, the focus of the case study for SAU 53 would be on Deerfield. We conducted, we conducted a review of demographic and enrollment trends over the past 10 years across all communities in the state. And Deerfield was identified as a community with strong enrollment growth, strong total population and senior population growth, as well as sizable housing construction activity. Deerfield is one of only eight other districts that had enrollment growth of 30 plus students from 2011 to 2022. So they specifically asked us to take part. I made sure there was no cost. They, again, are commissioned by New Hampshire Housing. We signed, I signed an agreement because they wanted addresses so that they could compare the actual developments with the actual students that are here. So I did tell them I think we need to sign an agreement. They already had one that they signed with the districts. So they can't just keep addresses of students unless we have, we under any kind of agreement. So I signed that. And next steps, they are going to want to talk to us. They'll probably give us some streets that we can pull addresses out for them. Out of Alma, the Southern New Hampshire Planning, and Sylvia, and I forget the other guy's name.
Cam Pro.
Cam, that's it. Have already spoken to them and agreed that since they had already worked in Deerfield, they'd be willing to help them too, because they had already done some work in Deerfield. So I think it'll be great. Great opportunity for us to get some of the data. Yeah, for sure. There's a lot of land in Deerfield.
Is this a, is this a?
I don't know how that's governed or, yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's. Look into that. It is, yeah, I think.
Where's our data going?
Yeah, right, exactly. Sound you. I would love to be part of that study to get the.
Looks like there are.
Yeah, there are dot org, yeah. I imagine they're under DHHS, but I don't know. I didn't go that deep to find out how they.
Did you hear what the other seven, ten words?
No, he didn't say. Didn't say.
Mary, is this involved? I don't know. Guessing we're pretty tough. And there is state laws about how you're dating.
Yeah, it's, there is a multi-page agreement about not sharing data, destroying our data as soon as the study's finished. But yes, I can, I can follow that and ask that question. My second informational, hold on, I had three, one's already on there. The New Hampshire School Board Association resolutions that have been proposed, those are in the drive. And we have to vote on those either the next meeting or the meeting after, because your delegate goes on Saturday to vote on your behalf on October 14th. So we need to. Yeah, they changed it. Yep. Probably, I don't know, but I think they changed it. So you'll need to vote on each of the resolutions on whether the board supports the resolution or not. And then your delegate goes to the delegate assembly and votes accordingly. Perfect. I've been bothering Ellen about that. So if you are the delegate, you're a member. Oh, and I already saw that my other gotten. I need to get dates from me and Danielle. We were, we received requests to bargain with the pair professionals, and I already did that, so. And is that for March? Yes, do you want this year's warrant? Yep. So we'll be starting negotiations within a couple of weeks, I would anticipate. That's it. I have two informational items as well. There's, I had Ashley put in the R drive, the calendar for the full SAU board meetings. There's a full board meeting on October 11th, which is a Wednesday between our two meetings. So I know that they sometimes are struggling to get a quorum. So the two meetings in October are really important because the first one, we go over the budget, our budget presentation. And the second one, we vote on the SAU budget. So we have to have a quorum. So take a look and clear your calendar if you can.
That's a rule.
Yes, and 25th. Yeah, it's the, we have a meeting every Wednesday in October. I have them every Wednesday in September. Me too. 11th and 25th. Two budget meetings. And then everyone should be getting emails from the New Hampshire School Board Association. But if not, they just sent out their list of fall trainings. So you can watch them live or they are on the school website or the New Hampshire School Association website afterward. I'm sure I will continue to follow you. I watched one this week. And I was like, whoa. I knew everybody. You texted me this random question about adequacy. I was like, what? It's like a webinar. I know the webinar. And I don't, I don't know about adequacy. So anyway, they're very informative. If you were learning quantum about adequacy, there was just one this week and it's now posted on the website.
Also, if you can't read the webinar.
They report them.
Yeah, that's good to know.
It's great.
A lot of the times they have, I just.
Yes. But. They're almost all like during. They're like nine to 12 or 12.
Yeah, they're like.
Some every once in a while. Yeah, they do report them. So that one's been already to be available for.
They have one where it gives the delegate how to be a delegate.
Yeah. How, next then. And you just go and vote on, like, the board's going to tell you how to vote on each resolution. So when they cast the vote, you just say yes or no, whatever the board told you to vote. They're trusting when you go, you're going to vote the way they direct you to vote. There's, there's also like the, in their, they have a whole list of their trainings for the football. And then there was also a legal conference. If anyone wants to go. I do. It's really good. Cause I'm a kid, a kid or mom. Yeah, it's really good. Um, but if anyone else wants to go, you're welcome to join me. And where did my agenda go now? Okay. That was my informational items. Okay, back to public comments. All circle.
Hi, Nancy Shue. I'm excited about the Concord report because my comment kind of has to do with that. And I don't know if that will be in public session or if that's something.
Public.
It will be public. Because there was a meeting in August where numbers came up about missing students. And so that concerned me because the numbers seemed high. So of course me, I had to sit and at least pick one class and try to figure it out if I got the numbers. And I don't, and I didn't reach out to Kim, and I should have. But I found this little report and the class that I picked was Deerfield 2013. So they graduated from Concord in 2017. And according to Concord, they only have three unaccounted for students. So that was my first thing. So I found a little report and I took out all the kids that I knew had gone to other schools, which I didn't see that in the numbers. They just took 52 from Deerfield, subtracted the 35 that graduated, and came up with the magic number of 17. But if you take out the kids that went to other schools, that changes the missing students. The ones circled are the kids I don't know. And I actually was going to go to Heather Swanson and see if she remembered any of them and where they might have gone. Because I know some kids went to Raymond. I know some kids went to other school. I don't know who they are. But when I went through my numbers, I found 10 missing kids. So I really hope that in that report from Concord, they do tell us if there are missing kids. And if not, maybe that's something Deerfield does need to look at, not only at Concord, but any school that we send our kids to. What is their success rate? Who is graduating? Because it did, as I said, it really bothered me when I saw numbers like 18, 19. And I was like, I don't, I, that bothered me. As a teacher, it bothered me and as a parent and everything. So I hope that report will answer my question. But like I said, I came up, Concord has three. I found 10. So I hope you can get that information. I think it would be good for the community. Thanks.
Thank you. The last year's report is on our way.
Hello again, a couple of items. It costs 500 bucks on average to print a postcard. Might cost you guys more if you bear your postcards. And it costs roughly $400 to get them out to everybody in town. So for under $1,000, you can reach everybody in town, including PO boxes. And when you're dealing with a budget of 15 million, $1,000 is probably not a bad investment. The CIP is available on the town website. Go to the town website, put in capital improvement program. It will pop up 2020 to 2026. So it's, we're still in the middle of it. Let's see, there's an energy committee meeting on the 13th of September, to which any representative would be welcome to talk about whatever you all want to talk about. I mean, we've talked about, I'm on the energy committee. We've talked about stuff here. And there's some specific things that are public work for you all to think about in terms of options. So if you want to come, if you're available on the 13th. Okay. But, yeah, so there's plenty of stuff going on there. In theory, the 107th bridge will be done by the 20th. It's not official, but it gives them two weeks to curb and pave, curb and guardrail it. Oh, I saw guardrail, sorry. So, so it's a pretty good shot that it'll be done by then. I don't know how that affects your schedule. You were talking about it earlier. And last but not least, I will, one more time, show the Gazette as a way to reach everybody in town. One topic that I know I thought about when I first came to town, because I had no idea what an SAU was. It might be helpful to, to think that's a useful channel for you to communicate with town is explain to the town what the, what the system is. SAU, DCS board, how's it all working? That might be helpful, educational kind of thing to put together. As many words as you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will make a motion to go into nonpublic session under NHRS A91A colon three, two, roll it, okay? Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. Tell Jeff.
I wrote it to him and he wrote back, yeah, twice.